The regular city council meeting is called to order at 7:34 February 22, 2018. The pledge, please, Madam President. Councilman Bodie.
Present.
Councilman Benton.
Present.
Councilman Hewitt.
Present.
Councilman Johnston.
Present.
Councilman Wheeler.
Present.
Mayor Misselli.
Present.
Police Chief Walker.
Here.
Fire Chief St. Seer.
Present.
City Attorney Bieris. City CPA Linda Lulu.
She's not here.
Is absent. And Municipal Clerk Nicole Lee, present. Before we get started, I'd like to recognize the events of last week on Ash Wednesday, February 14. Seventeen people were killed and fifteen injured when a shooter opened fire in South Florida High School. This tragedy serves as a reminder how precious life is and that we all have a responsibility to report problems and to make our communities better. I'd like you to please join me in a moment of silence for the victims in Florida. Thank you. I'd also like to take this opportunity to update everyone on some community projects. Pump Station Eight rehabilitation project. The bids were received January 31, and we received five bids. The successful lowest bidder went to Fleming Construction at $124,410. Contract execution should occur next week with a notice to proceed also next week. Work is planned to be completed by May 2018. Sewer pipeline repairs by Gulf Coast Underground. The contractor continues to work on pipe repairs and still has a few more rear light, rear lot pipe repairs to complete. We have asked them to improve notification to the residents of when they are planning to or need access into someone's backyard. Restoration will begin shortly on concrete streets and sodding throughout the city. Substantial completion should be achieved this month with final completion and restorations completing in March. Our street resurfacing project. The design for street resurfacing along VFW Keelman, Prado's, Marquette knee streets are scheduled for completion in March with actual roadwork to begin in June. We anticipate using Jefferson Parish's annual asphalt concrete to perform the work. Pump Station Six rehabilitation and rerouting. I'll just remind everyone right now, most of the sewage that enters the plant is through that one lift station, and if anything happens to that one lift station, the entire, about eighty percent of the city could be without sewer. So this rerouting to, through Pump Station Six will take off forty percent of that load and decrease that burden and improve functioning for the entire city. The design is, the design work is on schedule for completion for April with bidding expected to be in May of this year. Construction work should begin in June and be completed by late 2018. But I've come to learn that whenever I give a date of construction completion, please know that it tends to always get pushed back. It seems pretty routine, not just for the city of Harahan, but everywhere. This is the final contract to be funded by the state clean water construction program. I'd also like to mention again our street scapeing grant. Yesterday, we had our first teleconference on this grant. In May 2016, the city participated in a feasibility study for a TAP or DOTD grant for sidewalk and landscape improvements. October 2017, Harahan learned upon review of our application that we were awarded $338,763 in grant money for our project, proposed project. The project will address existing sidewalk issues, curb ramps, and pedestrian access deficiency along some streets, along Jefferson, along some areas along Jefferson Highway. The grant will also address some crosswalk refurbishment and minor drainage issues. Though this grant will not address all areas that are in need of improvements, it is a wonderful and welcome large first step. This initiative will help make our communities safer for pedestrians and cyclists friendly. It will also improve the appearance along our main thoroughfare, Jefferson Highway. Work is expected to begin before the end of the year. As we have updates, we'll let you know. We've got our, like I said, our preliminary design. We're happy to share that, and it's very exciting that we have this attention. We now have special presentations. Darlene, welcome back. We missed you. Darlene Schwartz, our community liaison.
Good evening, everybody. Got a couple of community relation announcements tonight. One, I'd like to remind everybody that property taxes were due December 31, and beginning February 1, additional fees started to be added to that in addition to the interest. You got tomorrow, February 28 to get the current payment in, and then on March 1, another $90 will be added to your 2017 property tax bill. So I don't know about most of y'all, but it might even be worth to put on a credit card because I don't think you're going to be paying $90 worth of interest on a property tax bill. So please work hard to get that payment in, postmarked by February 28, and get that taken care of. I would suggest if you're delinquent on the Harahan, you might also check with Jefferson Parish because if it's something that was supposed to come out of escrow or you're a new property owner and it didn't get taken care of, it's very possible Jefferson Parish is hanging out there also. We're trying to go door by door to people that may have overlooked it and remind you, but if we don't get to you before the end of the month, please help spread the word to get that out there. Also today in the mail, everybody knows I'm a big advocate of the Drug Enforcement Take Back Day. It's coming up again on April 28, Saturday. I got the mail today from the U.S. Drug Enforcement Administration. So please start collecting your expired, unwanted, unused prescription and over-the-counter drugs so we can get this stuff properly disposed of. And I'll remind everybody, let's see, we got March's meeting for sure and maybe even April to kind of get the word out, and we'll start putting, putting that information out there for everyone. And that'll again be from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., certainly at Rite Aid Pharmacy and at our police department next door to collect that from you, no questions asked. And then last, I wanted to tell everyone out there, thank you. For the words of support for my family and I. We lost my mom four weeks ago today. And it's a killer. It's too many people out there that have sent text messages and cards and phone calls and words of sympathy. And I just wanted to use this time, even though it's not community relations, to say thanks to all of y'all. It means a lot to my dad, my brother and I, and so, thank you very much. If you don't get a card in the mail, it's just not being mean or ugly. I just can't get them all done. So thanks, and we'll see you guys next month.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to just add, Darlene, that your family means a lot to this community, to me personally, to my family, and we are all there for you and we'll always be there for you. So, thanks. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, viewing audience. Tim Walker, Harahan Police Chief. I guess back to the same thing with INCODE. I spoke to the mayor earlier today, and they said they're working on it, but we've had an ordinance in place, and it's been how many months we've asked them to have read-only? It took about five minutes to take us out of INCODE access, and I don't know what the delay is to give us back read-only on the financials. This past week, I attended Louisiana Municipal Association Conference in Baton Rouge, and I happened to be sitting next to the mayor of Mandeville. They got about 12,500 citizens compared to our 9,300. They have a $20 million budget compared to our $6 million budget. And the mayor pulls up on his phone, they already had the January financials out. They sent it to the council, they sent it to the news media, and it's on their webpage end of the month. I still don't think we have end of the year financials yet from 2017, and we go on approaching March already. It's kind of hard to run an operation when you know where you are financially, and you try to stay within budget, and it's kind of hard to do. In mail last, you know, last month, I had some statements I made. You said you were going to respond, you had fourteen responses. One of them, you finally admitted that you called the dealership in Baton Rouge not to sell us cars. Would you comment on what you actually told the dealership? Because we've been told that you said, "Don't sell them the cars, they don't have the money."
Just finish your presentation.
I mean, that last month I finished, and you never responded to it. And I guess Councilman Benton, I owe you an apology. I went back and I pulled the purchase order, and I'm sure you had a copy of it, too. It was six machine guns that we bought, wasn't four or one like you originally said. We use the same equipment, I mean, the city is no different than our surrounding area. The whole state uses the International Building Code when they build buildings. Our streets, our drainage is made to the same specifications everybody surrounded us. But you continually comment on the equipment we buy for our police department. If I used John Allergy, our fire department would have a garden hose to fight fires. It's, you know, you never say anything about we spent over $350,000 on two years for finance directed that was budgeted just under $100,000. That's not a problem, but the equipment that I bought primarily was funding from Justin Parish Councilman Paul Johnson. You keep saying, "Why didn't you use it for payroll?" Number one, as you know, it's not reoccurring money. It was money that was dedicated for one specific expense, whether it was buying automobiles for the police department or buying ammunition or weapons. And then Ms. Lulu's not here tonight. I understand because the police officers weren't properly entered into the pension system that we're being charged almost an extra $90,000. Do you know, Mayor? For additional to the pension system? You don't know? Okay. And then, like I asked you last time, we still using the same auditing firm even though they put the audit in in 2016 that we were over budget, even admitting we were under budget?
Yes.
We still using them? It's kind of hard to believe. And I'd sent you an email a few weeks back. We're trying to get a copy of all our payments from the police department for health insurance. We talked to Doll Insurance, our insurance agent. They sent you the information. We believe there's some discrepancies, and the only thing sent back is tell you what the discrepancies are. I don't know what the discrepancies are until we get the information to compare with what we have. Is there a reason why we can't get that?
There's a lot of private information on it, Chief, so I'd like to know.
Oh, we asked for the police department. We're not asking for the whole city with health insurance. That's what Doll sent you. The payments that the police department made in 2017 for health insurance has nothing to do with specific employees outside of the police department. And all we wanted was the figures that were paid, you know? And then, like I mentioned last month, Crime Stoppers is still using, the campaign right now, lock it or leave it. Right before Mardi Gras, we went through one of the neighborhoods by Harahan School to notify the neighbors that the parade was coming by. Nine cars in about a six-block area were unlocked. Press the button, lock it, please. Thank you.
We will now do address the council. Anyone who would like to come up, please state your name, your address, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, council, mayor, Harahan citizens. My name is John Aggiore. I am from Savantime. My sister's stable, my brother's bar. I got you guys some hats.
Thank you.
And you guys as well. We'll be having a soft opening tomorrow night. It's open for everybody to attend. All the local businesses, citizens, we are more than happy to accommodate you and actually have some good drinks, some free food, and kick off our little bar over there and hope to see you guys tomorrow. From 6:00 p.m. on, we'll have a DJ, karaoke, and Michael Jackson will make an appearance. It'll be a good time. I hope to see you guys there. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Well, I don't have a bar to invite y'all to, but we're doing a presentation at the senior center on March 1, and not only do I want to invite everybody up here, but the whole audience, whoever wants to come. It's a thing for Margaret Murphy, who was a volunteer over there for over thirty years. We bought a bench, well, we bought one bench to match the bench that her son bought, and we're going to do a little thing. And I talked to a bunch of officials already about coming, and council, y'all are welcome to come, March 1. We're going to have some hors d'oeuvres, nothing really great, but just something that, 4:30. I appreciate it, y'all, whoever can come, we'll be there. Thank y'all.
Thank you very much.
Hello. Jason Brigg, 7204 Stonely, Still. I want to know, Mayor, you had said just a moment ago to the chief that there are some things that need to be figured out with regards to this INCODE access. Well, that doesn't make any sense to me because a few months ago, it was voted on directing this administration to give him access. It's just access, read-only, to see financial documents, financial records on the system. Doesn't seem like there's anything left to figure out. It's just a directive to do it. So my question, I guess, is what is so incredibly important and difficult that's left to figure out? That's my first question. Second question has to do with contracts. We already know that there's an issue with contracts. I want to know if this administration is going to submit those contracts that you just mentioned to the council for approval prior to signature, which is what I believe the statute says has to happen. So my second question is whether or not the administration's going to abide by Harahan law and submit it to the council. Thank you.
Evelyn Ream. The city of Harahan needs residents.
Hold on, I'm sorry to restart. Thank you.
The city of Harahan needs residents would like to congratulate Durr Heavy Construction Company on moving their trucks and equipment to their new property at River Road and Ornate Road in Jefferson. May God prosper Durr with much success in their business. Southeast Louisiana Flood Protection Authority Commissioner Herbert Miller brought forth a motion at the December 21, 2017 meeting and was approved by all the commissioners. That included getting an anticipated completion date on Wood Materials' new haul road along the river. The expected completion date is the second week of April, but Supervisor Derek Bates, who is monitoring the work, said it may be completed earlier. At the June 16, 2016 Harahan Council meeting, line A engineer and Wood Materials attorney Remy Donnelly gave a presentation, and in their speech, they committed to abandon the old haul road, close the berms that are open, place tree curtains, and plant grass. The haul road along the levee has caused much problems for far too long to the residents of Harahan concerning Wood Materials' illegal compost mulch tree dumping and manufacturing facility on the bachelor in Harahan. Council and mayor, this is where it was November 29, 2011, and it was these three little bins right here. Here is what it is today, February 13, 2018. This is like a grandmother hoarding stuff in her house. This is completely out of control. This is not normal for a person to do this kind of stuff, especially when they know it's illegal.
But do you put it so that the camera can see?
Well, Johnny's going to use it next one. I'm going to pass it to you guys so you can see it up close. Look at the size of the trucks and the size of the piles of compost on the other side, and I'll continue my speech till I run out of time. Okay, so, Mayor, your quote in the newspaper regarding the Gulf Coast stated, "Protecting the sanctity of our peaceful city and the integrity of our neighborhoods." Residents affected by the bachelor hope this same quote can be applied to the bachelor in Harahan. Attorney Gilbert Bieris has a court date for a full trial concerning Wood Materials' illegal compost facility on the bachelor been issued yet. Can you please explain?
Should we want to do that after? I'll do that after I address the council, and everybody's done that.
Well, just in case I have a question, because I know that we talked in office, but it was only like five minutes or so, and everything just went completely over our heads.
So your three minutes have got to just cancel because it's up out of, okay?
Thank you. I mean, I had to go outside for a little while because I was like, what did he say? You know, because it's so discouraging because, and I'm just going to say how I feel for just a minute. And I appreciate y'all both bringing us in the office just now, but it was like five minutes, and it was like crash. And, you know, two years of this is quite long enough to be cited and then still in trial. And now it went from Fifth Circuit and Fifth Circuit, you know, day was in favor really because they sent it back to Kovac. But Kovac gave favor to Wood in the beginning, and so now we're going back there again, and it seems to be another argument where we thought there would be a full trial, and we don't even, you know, I'm saying this to you because I didn't get a chance to say it in there, you know, so I'm saying, I, you know, we thought that the residents would be able to come, and if it's an argument again with the same attorney and the same judge, and then if she says, "Oh, well, no," and votes in favor of Wood again, then it goes back to Fifth Circuit, and then we have to wait for another court date. He cannot have three years to be able to do something. I'm trying, I prayed, God, please don't let me lose it because I'm so, I wanted to cry. I had to step outside and go across the street.
Welcome, welcome to my world.
But, but you know, after two years, that's a long time. You guys, this place is monstrous. And there's a pit right behind it with water that Wood would like to turn all of Harahan into a full, out-blown mulching compost facility. And that's wrong. That's totally wrong. So, you know, you know, we thought there was going to be a full trial. We're pretty excited about a full trial, and now it's like it's an argument, and it's like maybe there's not even going to be an argument for us to be able to go to or tell the residents to come to. So then, that's discouraging, too. You know, we planned on going out and letting all the residents know because they want to be there, but now it looks like it might not even, you might give yours, he might give his, and then there won't be a place for us to even come here. That's what Wood wants to do. He wants to strap these residents' mouths shut because he knows if these residents get up there, and we got the facts, we got all facts, we have studied this for two years, we could be in college with this. He wants to keep our mouths strapped and set down out the way. And that is, after two years, residents deserve to be able to get up and speak. They need to speak, and they deserve to speak. And Wood is only trying to continue to do this, and this is crazy because they have a, they should be having balloons out there. We're building a new haul road. We're going to have the best sand pit in the whole entire world, and we should be rejoicing with that. But how can the residents rejoice when there is a stinky illegal compost across the street from them? What in the world is going on? We've been in this politic things for two years. What, what? It might go into the next administration by the time this happens, three years. What can possibly be done where there can be a full trial? Or at least an argument where y'all are both in there and we can say, "Wow, Gilbert, you did a great job because you did on the last time, and we told you that. We even posted on Facebook." But if we can't even come in and listen, then we're strapped down, and that's what Wood wants because he don't want us to get loose or the residents to get loose because he knows what's going to happen. So, you know, I'm sorry, if we could have had a half an hour in there, I could have said it to you in there, but I'm so disturbed, I don't even know if I could sit for the rest of the meeting. We're tired, but we're not going to quit fighting. Tim, you said to Wood Materials, "The Reams will not stop. God would have to take us home to heaven for us to stop because this is God's job, and God will win because he loses absolutely nothing." So we thought there was going to be full trial. We're disappointed. We're disappointed because we know you need to be unleashed because when you're unleashed, you are going to cause some problems, and you're getting strapped. You should be as mad as us. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm trying to be as respectful as I can to you. Because I apologize to you for the last time I was it, and I never want that to happen again.
We're all on the same page here.
It just wasn't good for me to hear that five minutes.
Do you want me to get, explain it to the audience?
Yes, I would love you. Maybe they can explain it to me because I need Robert to be.
Okay, this is where matters stand. After the Fifth Circuit bounced the case back to the district court, vacated what the trial judge did, said start from square one. I spoke with the Woods lawyers. I said, "Listen, let's save everybody some time and aggravation." They insist that Harahan is too late suing over that compost facility. They say, "You're subject to a three-year prescriptive period. You guys didn't start, you didn't sue us within three years when we started out there, and so you're out of luck." Our position is, it's a five-year prescriptive period, and we did sue them to stop the compost operation within five years of their getting the permits to start it. There's no case law on this interpretation in the state of Louisiana. I've shared my brief with some of the lawyers in the city, and I think we've got the better argument. And this statute is going to have statewide applications, so the judges on the Fifth Circuit want to make sure they get it right. So it's three years or five years. If they say it's a three-year statute of limitations, we're out of luck. Now, there is one other wrinkle in there that I won't divulge right now because it's my little litigation secret. But, so there's another wrinkle in there, but three years or five years. If it's three years, we're out of luck. Five years, if it's five years, that operation has to cease. In my professional opinion, there's just no middle ground. The trial judge said, "Oh, the balance of harms." There's no balance of harms test in Louisiana on a mandatory injunction. It's either on or off. There's no, "We're going to do a little balancing thing here." Louisiana does not recognize that. So the critical issue is the prescriptive issue. If we're out of luck, there's no more argument. If we're still within the time, we get the injunction. In litigation, when you file a lawsuit, you sue somebody, there are some preliminary steps that the defendant takes. They can say, "Oh, you got the wrong guy. Oh, you filed too late." Those are known as exceptions. They can always file an exception. When Wood answered our lawsuit, they filed their exceptions and their answer at the same time. That's the way, you have a right to plead it like that. And on the morning of the preliminary injunction hearing, Wood came in and it started arguing prescription. It argued some other stuff, but it mainly argued prescription. And the first thing the trial judge said was, "I'm not hearing, I'm not ruling on the prescription issue." And then she ruled against us, and I said, "Give me written reasons." And when I got the written reasons, it was all about prescription. So that's why I took it to the Fifth Circuit. So now we're back. So I asked the Wood lawyers after it got kicked back. I said, "Do you want to just wrap everything up in one hearing? Try the exception and the motion for the preliminary injunction on the same day." You can do that if you do it by consent. And while they told me at first, "Yeah, that sounds like a good procedure. It would save us all some time and aggravation." When it got to the weekend before the status conference, before Judge Kovac, where we're going to decide these issues, all of a sudden, they didn't want to do that anymore. We want our prescription issue heard first. Enough said. You got a right to do that. That's great. So I've shared these emails with the Reams. After those discussions... After those discussions by email on Saturday and Sunday, Wood's lawyer was in trial. I had a trial scheduled in civil district court. I said, listen, well, we're not gonna get the status conference done. I'm just gonna file to set your exception, your prescription exception for hearing. And I tell Mr. Ballard that, and I send him an email, and I get this out-of-office reply. I'm in trial, speak to my secretary. So I did. I called the court first. I said, give me some dates in March to set the exception. Court gave me three dates. Got in touch with Mr. Ballard's secretary. Oh, he's free this day, this day. But this is the best one, March 16th. Said, great. Write up my petition, my order, I send it in to the judge, judge signs it, March 16th. The next day, Mr. Ballard goes into orbit, tells me his secretary had no authority to do that. I said, well, really, that's between you and your secretary. I'm just going about what your out-of-office memo said. He said, you file whatever you want. If you don't like the date, that's the date your office staff gave me, that's the date I set with the court. If you want to object to it, go file something, but that's the date, March 16th. It's only on the exception of prescription. He's told me he has nothing else to add from the documents that were already introduced, we thought properly, in the district court the last time we heard this. That's up to him, whether he wants to put anything new in or not, that's his decision. It's his exception, but it's the date that I've asked that it be heard. So on March 16th, unless, of course, he comes in and asks for a continuance, and it gets bumped farther along again, that's the day the judge will have it submitted to her to make a ruling on the prescription, on the exception of prescription. If she rules against us, we're going back to the Fifth Circuit to re-argue what we've already argued, but this time with a properly made record. So I will ask the Fifth Circuit, if it comes to that, I'll ask the Fifth Circuit for an expedited hearing. If we lose the exception prescription in the district court and the appeals court, I will ask for a writ to the Louisiana Supreme Court, because I think we're right on the law. So that's what the procedure is, and I know it, I know it takes, it seems to take forever. This is the practice that we're in. I mean, you ask any lawyer in this city, and they're gonna tell you, this is simply the way that litigation works. And it's nobody's fault, it's simply the fact that this is how the court system progresses.
Is it okay if we were both, like, city and?
I know, and I know that this thing, and now that the spring is coming, that this is gonna be an even bigger nuisance out there. In my professional opinion, you know, this should have been sued over the day that Harrahann found out about it, but, you know, I wasn't the city attorney five years ago, or three years ago. So, you know, we're doing everything that we can to vindicate the city's rights. Your zoning ordinance is crystal clear. This is not a permitted use, never was, never was. Should have been stopped, should have been nipped in the bud years ago. It wasn't. I gotta take the cases, I gotta take the cases I find. But I don't want you to think that I'm not gonna play hardball with this. You saw me in the Fifth Circuit. I am very exercised about the way that the opponents, who have seven lawyers on this case against little old me, they can't seem to find a date, they can't find one of them to argue this on March 16th. Seven people on the pleadings. So it just goes to show you what the balances are, you know, when you're up against this kind of thing. But, look, I'm here for you. We are going to litigate this, and I'm not taking no until I go to the court of final jurisdiction on this. I think we're right on the prescription argument, and I think we're right on the mandatory injunction argument.
Thank you.
Thank you for the explanation. I could not explain that to them the way you did, so thank you for the explanation. And, you know, y'all need to be together on this. Mayor, the council, all of you need to be in action on it, and they should not be allowed to continue to do this. This is just, whatever Dana you can do, Craig, whatever you can do, Tim, whatever you can do, Sue, whatever you can do, thank you for coming to that. Carrie, everybody, get together and join together with hands, and this needs to be out. This is not fair to the residents of Harrahann. They should not have to put up with illegal, knowing it was illegal, illegal activity. Thank you for the extra time.
Thank you. Ms. Reed.
John Reed, three red pass. The Harrahann non-urban bachelor district ordinance was put into place long ago to protect the quality of life of the large Harrahann residential community. Compost mulch tree dumping and manufacturing are not permitted uses on the Harrahann bachelor district, in the Harrahann bachelor district ordinance. Wood Materials, LDAF, BMP permit states, your facility must comply with all local ordinances. And he brought this into Harrahann with the LDAF permit without any permit from Harrahann, and brought it into Harrahann. And LDAF, we've been to Baton Rouge and talked to Mike Strain, the LDAF commissioner, and they don't want to do anything because it's in court. In my opinion, that's a worthless group up there, but anyway, that, next. In February 2016, Mayor Tina Mocelli cited Wood Materials for their illegal compost and mulch facility on the bachelor in Harrahann. Wood Materials sued the city of Harrahann to continue their illegal mulching and composting on the bachelor in Harrahann. Sued, well, how would you like it if they sued the Harrahann police officers when they pulled them over to give them a ticket? And they keep speeding down the road. Okay, to show the pictures, right here, this side here is November 29, 2011. The council already saw it, the mayor saw it, and this is what it was. Three little bins in Jefferson Parish, because Paul Johnston told them in 2010 it was against the ordinance of Harrahann to bring that into Harrahann. So he put it in Jefferson Parish, right outside the border of Harrahann.
That's November 29, 2011.
2011. Okay, this is February 13, 2018. Wood Materials' huge illegal compost and mulch facility, two blocks long, from Bailey to Haraleen's, right next to the levee, 300 feet from the residents' homes in Harrahann. And you can see the size of this right here. You can see this is a semi truck right here. You see the size of this thing. And you see these piles of chemicals that they have here to mix up their compost, and I think Todd probably has some papers on that, MSDS, we call them something different. But if that's some kind of chemicals that can blow over the levee into Harrahann, because it's like a sand-based thing, because you can see, when this dries out, sand blows from here, because they run those machines up and down there to make the illegal compost. The compost pit is overly full, this two-block pit is overly full, and they have a road coming out the back to their pit seven. You see it coming out the back there? They just put that there.
Can I have a motion for one more minute? I have a motion by Councilman Bodie, seconded by Councilman Hewitt, all in favor? Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. One more minute, please start.
If he decides to go into that next pit and move some of that compost and mulch into there, it goes all the way to Raven Avenue, not far from Imperial Woods, which is the end of your street, but Wood can be a good neighbor if he wanted to. He has a place he can move this out of Harrahann and get rid of it in Harrahann. Never should have been here in the first place, and he knows that. So he could be a good neighbor to the residents of Harrahann, move the illegal compost out. And like Evelyn said, we need everybody to get together and to get these people out. Talk to somebody, y'all probably all know some people that know Wood, know Sarah Woodham. And they do have people that work for them, and they say, I've got over 100 employees. They only have one guy that works part-time back there in this place. They have 100 employees because they have a tour and business at barges. That's why they've got the 100 employees. They have several businesses. So thank y'all very much.
Thank you very much.
But try to get everything together to move that out of Harrahann.
Everybody. Sampson, be, for lots.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens. Jason Asbill, 573 Posey Avenue. At our last community meeting back on February 8 regarding the public's input on recycling program, there seemed to be confusion. One of the programs that was previously in place was a complimentary service offered by Ramelli under, or under a contract for fee. In fact, in fact, the mayor all but called me a liar when I recalled two private conversations in which she stated at the time that it was free. But how do I prove a private conversation? Well, good thing I don't have to.
In the meantime, free community recycling bins have been placed at the senior center, here in the parking lot, at City Hall, at the maintenance building, and at the Sonya Playground. And it's actually, people are utilizing them, and I was glad to hear positive feedback.
Contrary to the mayor's claims, she has canceled the community recycling program due to budget cuts. This would imply that the service was not free and should be under contract. As such, I've asked on two separate occasions to review the contract. The mayor has said once, I'll get back to you. The mayor has said a second time at the community meeting that she would put me in touch with the city attorney. I have not heard from either. Well, the citizens and the council, for that matter, have a right to know what the recycling contract entails and why it was canceled. As such, I prepared two public records requests and will deliver here in person to the city attorney and the mayor to provide those contracts, if available, whether written or verbal. In the meantime, there is an effort underway to bring back curbside recycling. I'd like to thank citizens Marie Stumpf and Barbara Harney. They've contacted Phoenix Recycling, so there is a service out there that will pick up community recycling for a fee. However, it is four times the previous fee. Just one last tidbit that I found this afternoon, I've included in the packet to the mayor and the city attorney. In the budget, in the proposed budget for 2018, there's over 250, about $248,000 for recycling revenues, and about $110,000 for recycling expenses. So if you can just explain that whenever you get the chance, not tonight, I don't want to take up too much time. Thank you, have a good evening.
Yes, I'd like to invite the public to a rally for Sheriff LaPinto. It's gonna be held on Saturday, March the 3rd, from 12 noon to 2:00 PM at the VFW Hall in 1100 block of Hickory Avenue. It's Saturday, March the 3rd, from noon to 2:00, meet Sheriff LaPinto. A rally for all.
Tim Bodie, 184 Oakland Avenue. Just wanted to say good evening, hello everyone, and after long thought and meeting with my friends and family, I have decided to run for mayor of Harrahann in the upcoming election, because we must come together as a community in the hostility. We must work together to progress. My platform will be in three parts to obtain one goal. One will be peace. As mayor, my focus will be on building bridges and not burning them down. I will foster cooperation, collaboration, and a free flow of information without procedural games. In order for Harrahann to become as sustainable as possible and beyond, we will have to do it as a community that works together. I will work for this council and the members to earn their trust and your trust, because I know how expensive this trust between the council and the mayor can be. I cannot do it as Tim, but I know we can do it as a team. Cooperation and respect is the key to forming a foundation that we can build upon and be proud of. Number two will be progress. Progress, at some point, sooner than later, progress has to be the plan for Harrahann. We have two commercial corridors that can be Harrahann's salvation if the potential is realized. We must build a strong financial foundation that will help Harrahann thrive. I have been working on putting a plan together on how we can promote responsible commercial while keeping the integrity of our neighborhoods. And I commit to, I commit to seeking a city planner that will help to balance our neighborhood with our growth. I will be discussing my plan with everyone over the next few months, as I will be out on the streets listening to any advice and direction that you may have as my neighbors, and may have, and anything you may would like to see happen in the near future. And I will seek citizens with experience and abilities to help. I will not act like a king, I will be a true public servant. And three, prosperity. The end game for the city of Harrahann has to be prosperity. The only way prosperity can be achieved in any circumstance in a community is by working together at that common goal. Supporting our police and fire, fixing our sewage and roads, bringing in new business while keeping our taxes low, that's prosperity to me. Working together to achieve a better community, a harmonious community, and a sense of trust amongst one another will achieve that goal. If anyone would like to reach me, you are welcome to call me at any time on my cell, which is 504-343-7762. I welcome any conversation you may have and look forward to seeing you on the campaign trail. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
We will now close, address the council. Approval of the minutes? Reading of the minutes of the special meeting on December 28. Do I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes? I have a motion by Councilman Benton, seconded by Councilman Bodie, all in favor? Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. The reading of the minutes is dispensed. Approval of the minutes of the special meeting on December 28. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Benton, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
We have?
Two, three.
Two and three?
Yeah.
Okay. The minutes are not approved, but please do, go ahead and meet law by posting. Reading of the minutes of the council meeting on January 25. Do I have a motion to proceed with, to disperse the reading? Dispense of the reading, sorry. I have a motion by Councilman Benton, seconded by Councilman Johnston, all in favor? Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. The minutes, the reading is dispensed. An approval of the minutes of the council meeting on January 25. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Bodie, all in favor? Any opposed?
Nay.
We have two yays, three nays. Minutes are not approved, and please post those and follow law for those as well. Communications? The Board of Adjustments and Appeals did not meet in January, and the Planning and Zoning Board did not meet in February. Resolutions, there are none. Ordinances for approval? Proposed ordinance number 2017-39, which was deferred from the January 25 meeting. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Wheeler and seconded by Councilman Bodie. This is an ordinance amending ordinance number 1822, the annual budget of revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2017, for the city of Harrahann, Louisiana. And this is for the police department. The public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to speak to this ordinance? The public hearing is then closed. Council discussion?
I can't get the body completed because I, Chief, I sympathize with you about the run sheets. I sent Linda Lulu an email on February 1st, February 19th, and February 22nd, three weeks to get run sheets so we can amend your budget. I can't amend it if I don't have the figures, and as of today's day, I still don't have those run sheets. So unfortunately, I'm gonna have to defer this again. Hopefully, I'll get the run sheets by the next meeting.
I did, she, I spoke to her because she wasn't feeling well. She is planning on trying to be here Friday, tomorrow.
Well, maybe that's great, but I mean, it's, I'm just kidding. She could have easily responded when I sent maybe the second response.
Do I have a motion? So you want to make a motion?
Well, I have to defer it. There's a motion to defer.
To, to the?
I guess March.
March 15. Okay, I have a motion to defer to the ordinance for the March regular city council meeting.
Second.
By Councilman Wheeler, seconded by Councilman Johnston, all in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have four yays. I think this was stepped out, so one abstention and?
One absent.
One absent, and the ordinance is deferred. Proposed ordinance number 2018-1. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Benton and seconded by Councilman, who would like to second this one?
I'll second.
Johnston. An ordinance relating to asphalt repairs around the city of Harrahann to be performed during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2018. The public hearing is now open for benefit to the residents. The public hearing is now open, uh, for benefit to the residents. The city engineer has sent the council and myself an explanation as to why this ordinance is needed. Um, I'd like to read it into the record if, uh, please bear with me. The proposed ordinance is for a budget line item of $30,000 for drainage maintenance.
That's one of the hundred thousand ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, I am so sorry. Thank you for, uh...
No problem.
Wait, wait, wait. This is for drainage, correct?
Yes.
Yes, so...
No, this, well, this is street repairs.
Okay, street repairs, okay, sorry. I have it backwards on my, my, mind. So, anyone wants to speak to this ordinance for street repair? If no one is here to speak to that ordinance, we'll close, uh, address the council, council discussion.
Actually, I, I think we just need some more information on this. It's saying that for streets Hebe and Elodie, but it also says, uh, also in here miscellaneous locations. I know back in the VFW area, we got a spreadsheet of what streets are expected to, monies to be allocated for the streets, for the curbs, for all that. We didn't get any information with this. So, do we know the names of the other streets that are being looked at? Do we know what else is gonna be done?
The maintenance and engineering department continually have areas of street repair that, um, the patchwork just isn't enough. So it may, we need money in order to be able to take care of some of these streets in disrepair as we see them. Um, we have the streets, of course, near the senior center that are in problem. We have streets that are off of Colonial that have problems, and there are stretches that may not be a whole street, but require more work than a simple patch. So, not having any money in that budget hinders the ability to, to address citizens' concerns.
Do we have a list of streets that are looked at?
We can defer it and get a list, I mean, but...
Well, we asked, we asked Mr. Hotmire that at the last meeting to provide us information on this hundred thousand he's requesting, along with the 30,000 for the drainage. We've never received that either. And then this goes back to the run sheet. You're asking us to allocate money, where how do we know where we are in certain line and budgets? You're asking us to expend more money, we don't even know what's in each department.
It is incumbent upon all of us to try and take care of our city.
Mayor, nobody is to...
Excuse me, uh, I, I'm just, you, you want me to know?
Please finish, please finish.
That, that's all, I'm just trying to give everybody information. In order to be able to respond to the needs of the community, um, you build a capital budget. That's why you do it, and capital budgets aren't just for a year, they tend to be a five-year plan. You need to be respond to day-to-day, not month-to-month, then et cetera. It is common to have money in a budget to repair streets other than fill a little pothole here or there. So, when you've got something that happens, we wanna be able to respond to it. We don't have money. The state law says that we should have a comprehensive budget, and that comprehensive budget is for the general fund and all of the, the departments, but it's also for the capital fund. So not having any working, any allocations makes it difficult to be responsive. So, if you wanna defer it, we can defer it, and that would be fine.
Mayor, you know, just as, as in, as to put the olive branch out there and, and rebuild the trust, um, it would definitely be a whole lot easier to rebuild the trust and quit so much animosity if we had something to go for, go, go off of. We're responsible for these numbers, not you. And for us just to throw money at something where we don't have all of the facts, that guesswork, I, I, I can't, you know, I can't put my name behind that, but if we had this, the data to go off of, and don't get me wrong, and I'm not picking, but we paying an accountant three times what she's supposed to be paid, but we still don't have run sheets to, to go off of, and, you know, and, and trying to, to find that, and trying to build that bridge, you, you're asking us to make a, or make a guesstimation on, on information that we don't have.
Can I ask that, uh, if, if you, please contact the city engineer?
I thought he was gonna be here tonight, that's why.
Honestly, I thought Linda would've been here, too.
And please include me on the email so we can have some conversation, um, before the, the next council meeting.
All right, well, basically, what I wanna, the information I want is, I understand it's Hebe and Elodie streets, that's fine. I wanna know where we're at, how much they're expecting to spend on those two streets, and what's the leftover money that's going to the other streets, and a list of the other streets that are being looked at.
And I don't recall this, uh, Councilman, but I believe that the last time Calvin Hotmire was here, he's talked about how mu, how mu, what was the dollar amount per foot, I believe, we asked to repair, uh, streets? And I don't recall exactly if that was an email or not that went to everyone also, but, um, we can certainly revisit and get that...
Sure.
Can, can we maybe start some, uh, a, a, a need, some conversation before we have the next meeting? Would you like to have a meeting with...
I'm saying exactly right now what I'm looking for, so it's...
Instead of working this out at a meeting?
Right, of course.
Would you like to have a meeting with Calvin, maybe next week? Calvin Hotmire, the engineer?
No, I could talk to him.
But e, e, even when we come to the meetings, the citizen should be informed of what this hundred thousand dollars is about to be spent on.
No, no, but it gives you that opportunity to ask all the questions, and that back and forth, and we could arrange that, and if you would like, I can ask Calvin when he's available, and we can start meeting in twos if you'd like, i, i, if that works for you. Would you like that?
Yeah.
Counsel?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Can you also ask Linda to get us our run sheets, too, please?
Mm-hmm. Okay, list, okay, so meeting, um...
I, I don't need a meeting, just provide us the run sheets, so we can make a decision.
Nicole, would you send an email to Calvin requesting maybe two dates next week and maybe after 5:00?
Whichever.
Is that work for everybody?
Whichever, that's fine.
Yes?
That's fine.
Okay, um, to meet with the council, maybe we could do it in, what, 20-minute time slots or something? Do y'all, maybe any?
It shouldn't take that long.
I said we would like one thing.
I'm saying exactly what I'm looking for. You should have the information ready and...
That's, that's, and that's what, and Sue, that's what we asked for. We provided an itemized list for...
VFW and...
For VFW, we asked that for this. It's simple.
I don't think it's as simple as that, but if you wanna do the list, but I'm just trying to foster some, uh, in, information, okay? Um, the next ordinance?
Motion to defer this ordinance?
Uh, I have a motion to defer to the next meeting of March 2018 by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Wheeler, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I like to...
We're in the middle of them. Do you approve or not? Yay, or nay? Uh, any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. Our ordinance is deferred.
I would just like to state for the record, if any ordinance comes before me for the rest of my term as a councilman, that says at other miscellaneous or something, I will not vote on that ordinance. I will not vote on miscellaneous or a open-ended term like that. Thank you, for the record.
And Mayor, before we start the next ordinance, I would just like to say, nobody on this council is not wanting these streets repaired. I hope y'all understand that. I personally would like to see the streets that are torn up get repaired before we start digging up more streets. Because, I know I drive down, and I'm sure everybody here has driven past them, so let's dig up more, and we have streets that there holes, that we've asked to have shells just fill in, that are just becoming bigger and bigger holes. So now, we're gonna dig up more streets. Let's try to fix what's out there first, and then maybe we can address some other streets. Just saying that.
Yes, we, we have capital money. What I'm asking, though, is legislatively, the council can also amend this ordinance, they can make assessments of what streets they would like to do, they can write their own ordinance for this, et cetera. Um, we're putting this out for, uh, to get this ball rolling, because we know there are needs, but this council can also amend the ordinance. You, if you've got a street or a certain section or a block that you want addressed, please, either you can write your own ordinance, or we can amend this one to address it. We would love to do that and have your input.
While we're on this subject, before we move on, talking about the streets being torn up to repair these sewers, are they, is, is that streets included in what they are doing? Like, are they gonna come and take, do the patching with, with the sewage?
Right, in the announcement.
Monies? Or is this gonna be this month?
No, no, that's gonna be included with the Gulf Coast Underground, and in the beginning, when I talked about, um, the projects that were coming to completion, we talked about, uh, the street repairs and being completed, substantial complete in February, and finished in March, and that, the, the, fixing the streets is, is just about coming.
Another thing I've noticed also, driving around the city, certain areas where they had already patched up the ground, it's already sinking.
Would you let me, would you, if you, when you notice that?
Yeah.
If you send that to us, that would be very appreciated.
Because to just be asphalted right away and already sinking, that's, that's...
And that's what the limestone...
Right, they're supposed to let it settle, then they're supposed to come back, re-layer it, right.
And that's why, you know, if you see that, if you let us know, we don't want to release the contractor if someone has noticed that's, an area failed. So that's, that would be great input. And that's another thing, by meeting with Calvin potentially next week, all those kind of topics can also come up, because he acts, he, he's interacting with the contractor.
Proposed ordinance number 2018-2. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Benton and seconded by Councilman... Who would like to second this one? This is for drainage maintenance.
Can we get a second so we can at least discuss it?
I'll second discuss this one.
Councilman Johnston, thank you very much.
This is an ordinance relating to drainage and maintenance around the city of Harahan to be performed during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2018.
Now I can, all right, thank you. Now I can say what, um, Calvin had said before we opened it to the, uh, public, so that you kinda know his assessment of everything. This was proposed, uh, for drainage maintenance. This will allow the city maintenance to perform critical maintenance, such as repairs to catch basins, replace broken grates, raise drain covers, address root intrusion into drain lines, affect drainage point repairs, provide internal CCTV inspection of drainage lines, and provide emergency catch basin cleaning as needed prior to a storm event. All of these activities are typical ways to address citizen inquiries and complaints about deficient areas in their neighborhoods. Having a drainage maintenance budget is also a requirement of our NPDES MS4 permit. While we completely intend to utilize the generous officer for, author from Councilman Paul Johnston to access and use the parish's vacuum truck and clean catch basins as a preventative measure, we also need additional funds. Prior to storm events, the parish often has other priority areas throughout the parish that they will use this equipment, and therefore, it may not be available to the city at that time. Our intent is to take advantage of this officer, offer, over the next couple of months, and clean as much as possible prior to hurricane season. So we, Calvin is getting that list together with, uh, Edwin Larisella and Maintenance to get that to Councilman Johnston. But, um, they're, here again, this is funds that, to fix things as they come up instead of waiting until they, they happen. And we have tree intrusion on a regular basis, we get phone calls, um, we have residents on Tyler that there's a large, uh, tree invasion. Uh, we have INI problems, and when that, uh, with the system for the sewer system and heavy rains, one affects the other. So, it's just important in order to address it. So we will now open to address the council.
Still Jason Bruzek, still, uh, 7204 Stone Lake. And Mayor, um, sorry, I'll go ahead and, you got your timer going?
Ooh.
All right. Um, at the beginning, uh, of the, of the meeting, during, addressing council, I asked a question with regards to contracts, whether you were going to be submitting those contracts to the council prior to, to, to signature. And I thought for sure, at the previous, um, ordinance, you would answer that question. But you didn't. I thought maybe you would answer it, you know, in, in between, but you haven't. So I'm up here again, asking, these all require a public bid and a contract, all of these. Are you gonna submit the contract to these guys so that they can do their due diligence and their job and review the contract prior to signature? It's a simple question. Harahan Law says you gotta. Okay, are you going to? That's all I wanna know. Thank you. Sure.
We will now close, address the council.
Uh, oh. Yeah, address the council on the drainage issue. Okay, thank you.
Uh, we will now close, address the council. Um, with all due respect to everyone and their opinions on all city ordinances, state ordinances, et cetera, um, I defer to the city attorney, his, his, uh, interpretation of the law, as he represents the city, um, and we follow all laws, um, the best way we can, and we do not violate the, the law. So, um, counsel, any discussion about the ordinance?
Yeah, I got discussion on it. Uh, last meeting, it was brought up, about $30,000. Councilman Wheeler and myself met with Councilman Paul Johnston to, you, see about using the truck that they just bought for, for the whole parish to come do this work. Uh, he offered us the truck to do it, which is fine. I understand you'll have a couple of other things, little minor things come up in the meantime, but to ask for the same amount, $30,000, when you're getting a truck to come in from the parish for free to take care of most of these issues, I, I think we have to talk to Calvin if, to see why we still need the $30,000, when majority of it's being taken care of by Jefferson Parish for one, and another is, again, where's the money going? What's, what's it gonna be spent on? Where's he expecting to spend this money? As far as all, all the items you had listed that he sent the email out on, how much is he expecting for each item that he has to take care of?
So I'll make a motion to defer. It's the same thing as the one before.
Okay, I have a motion to defer the ordinance to the March meeting, um, by Councilman Benton. Is it seconded?
Yeah.
Do I have a motion to second? Is it seconded?
I don't think we need to.
Motion fails for lack of a second.
Yeah, we just vote on the ordinance if it's not fair.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Call for a question.
Motion to...
Proceed with the vote. I have a motion by Councilman Johnston to proceed with the vote on the ordinance, seconded by...
Second.
Councilman Bodier, all in favor of the ordinance?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
We have one yay, four nays. Our ordinance fails.
Again, the reason why I voted against that was because we are getting majority of this stuff for free from Jefferson Parish to come do the drain cleanup and the, and the, uh, catch out basins, catch basins, whatever they call. So they're doing most of the work. I don't mind having to allocate a little bit of money, but to have the $30,000 with this whole list that I believe Jefferson Parish is gonna take care of most of it, we have to reevaluate what we're gonna do.
And hopefully, we'll get the list of the streets, Councilman Johnston. We, we asked that of Calvin last month, and he still hadn't provided it to us, so hopefully we'll get it this month.
Correct. And thank you, by the way.
Yes, thank you.
Old Business. There are no ordinances for introduction. Old Business, uh, number one, Civil Service Board Appointment.
There are two openings for Civil Service Board, one appointment, uh, to be from the list presented from Loyola University. I under, was informed that, um, Glenn Landry has reconsidered his resignation. Uh, he is qualified from the Loyola list, um, but I believe we'll need a formal nomination and to replac, place him again, um, if someone would like to put up that name as a nomination or if they have another. Does anyone have a nomination? Um, I, I would then like to nominate Mr. Glenn Landry, um, to this position. Uh, can I have a motion to proceed with the vote? I have a motion by Councilman Benton, seconded by... I have a motion by Councilman Benton, seconded by...
I'll second.
Councilman Bodie, all in favor of Glenn Landry to be on this...
What's his information? Who is he?
He's served prior. He decided not to be reappointed. Ms. Barbara Winhurst talked to him and he has reconsidered and is willing to serve. So he has served...
So he was on it already?
Yeah.
So all in favor of Glenn Landry?
Yeah.
Any opposed?
We have five yea, zero nays. The nomination, we think, is approved and we thank Mr. Landry for his service. Does anyone have a nominee for the second position?
Did you, uh...
I contacted the gentleman from Loyola. I do have somebody, but I'm still waiting on some information. So if we could defer the second nominee, I would appreciate that, to the March meeting.
I have, do you make a motion to defer?
I would like to make a motion to defer the second nominee to the March 15th meeting.
Motion by Councilman Wheeler, seconded by Councilman Johnston, all in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have five yea, zero nays. Motion passes.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to add mayor pro temp comments to Old Business so I can readdress a question that I asked of Councilman Beers at the last council meeting.
Second.
You mean you want to amend the agenda?
I want to amend the agenda, correct?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to amend the agenda for Councilman Bodie. What's the...
Number two, New Business?
Number two, Old Business.
Under Old Business?
Under New Business or Old Business?
Old Business. Since we're readdressing.
Okay.
Second.
By Councilman Bodie, seconded by Councilman Johnston, all in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have five yea, zero nays. Motion passed.
Okay, this is a question for you, Mr. Beers. I know that we have been told as a council that we cannot write law that inhibits the mayor's ability to do her job. Is that correct?
Are you quoting me?
No, no, I'm not quoting, I'm just asking, look.
Well, you, as a general principle of law, that's probably correct, but you have to apply your specific...
Okay, so my specific is, is by not allowing the police, we wrote a law that...
He needs the mic next time he talks.
We wrote a law to give police, the public police department, read-only access to ENCODE. Would you say that that inhibits the mayor's ability in doing her job?
Well, as I think I spoke to this at the last meeting when it was an issue, it depends on exactly what is being done. If you gave him read-only access to personal health information in a different department other than his own, he gets access on a need-to-know basis. I mean, that goes for any city employee, not just, not just the police chief. You know, you don't open up a database to everybody who's got, who gets a city paycheck. I certainly wouldn't be entitled to go snooping into personnel files of any city employee absent that employee being involved in litigation or my having a need-to-know. So I, you know, I don't want to give you a mealy-mouthed answer on this, but you know, if, if there are specifics that he needs to perform his functions as an elected police chief, certainly my opinion would be, he should be given that. If there is a legitimate reason for, based upon a privacy interest or some other constraint according to law for which the mayor says, I don't think you're, you do access to this information and I don't think I'm gonna give it to you. I think she's probably on good grounds not to, not to give it. But you have to take it on a case-by-case basis. Now, I know that you all want to open it up, you know, on read-only, but I've dealt with enough databases and been in enough privacy litigation in my career, not to just give you a pat answer and say, yeah, just open it up. I mean, it really does depend on what it is that's being sought. And I am not an expert on what this city maintains on its database. I would want to speak to its IT people and say, what do you have here? And, and tell me what it is that, that you think should be firewalled or should be protected under a privacy interest so that I can make sure, and I haven't been called on to do this, but those are the questions I would ask if I were asked to examine it on a specific basis. And look, I, you know, I don't know what the police chief, I don't, I'm not involved in that. I don't work in this building. You know, if, if I, if you sit me down and you show them, well, I want this specific financial information. Financial information generally is going to be discoverable by anybody, you know. Any public citizen, I see the mayor shaking her head. Financial information, that's pretty much public record. But to say, well, I'm gonna just give them read-only access, you just can't make it that broad because you can get read-only access to some pretty sensitive stuff. So that's, you know, I, that's my, you know, my, as square an opinion as I can give you without knowing the specifics of what goes on. Look, if you want me to sit here for, you know, 48 hours and burn up some time trying to, you know, mediate whatever this dispute is about who can see what and, you know, who's not getting what information, I'll be happy to do that. It's really something I think that everybody needs to work out, you know, in the context of their own job.
And I'd like to thank the secretary from the police department who came over, talked with two of our staff members, explained just recently what she needed. And I talked to the police chief today and I said, please, get back to us. Let us know if that worked.
Yeah, and look, the same thing applies to this, you know, the question that Mr. Bruzek, you know, puts out here. You know, it's, first off, it's called Address the Council, not, you know, Grand Inquisition of the Council. And it's Address the Council, you know, that was directed toward the mayor. But, you know, the same, the same thing applies. You know, I've said this before, I'm gonna say it again. The Larson Act is something that was, it doesn't fit your government anymore. It just doesn't. And it's not a sophisticated law. It doesn't take into consideration the fact that, that government works differently and you all are just a little bit too big for its britches right now. And the contract thing is a perfect issue. It's a perfect example of it. You write an ordinance that says that every contract has to be approved by us. You can't sign anything, Mayor, unless it runs through us. I'm still waiting on an opinion from the Attorney General. You know why I think I'm not getting it? Because they see the same difficulties that I do. How do you, how do you practically do that in any kind of government institution? Where the mayor, you know, she's got to come back for, every, every, every paycheck is a contract. She's got to come back to you for everything that she does? If you do, if you make it too draconian, you hamstring the mayor. And look, Councilman Bodie, if you're, if you happen to be elected mayor, you're gonna face the same issue. You know, do you want to be hamstrung to sign every, you gotta go to the council for every contract that you have to sign? So there has to be a...
But I will, I will go to the council.
I know you say that, you say that now. But that's, that is, that's the balancing act that has to be done between the council and the mayor. And, you know, I know you've, you've passed these ordinances to try to, you know, corral the mayor in a certain way. I'm not sure that the Larson Act intended that. And so I think it has to be taken on a case-by-case basis. But I just want to shoot it straight to you, okay?
So my struggle is, Chief, do you have any access to ENCODE?
We're not looking for personnel files. In fact, personnel files are not ENCODE. ENCODE is a financial software package. We're trying to keep abreast of what's going on financially because we, the police department, get charged for things that are not ours.
Yeah, well, yeah, we've, we've heard this.
And that's all I've asked for. I'm not asking for the personnel files.
So...
Personnel files are not in ENCODE. It's this big smoke in Mira trying to say we want this and that. We don't want all that. Well, we want just financials to make sure that we're being charged for things that are rightfully ours to be charged for.
And you want that for the entire city budget?
No.
Not just for your department?
No, not just for the department because...
I didn't hear that.
We being charged for other departments. As I mentioned a couple of meetings ago, once we finally got your, some of your invoices, we, the police department, got charged for you to attend the council meeting. No disrespect, but why should the police department pay $700 and something dollars for you to attend the council meeting?
So my question is...
And then the other thing, when we would have found out that four former police employees that were gone for about a year, that they charged our department almost $22,000 in health insurance premiums, no longer employed. My question was, did they get a paycheck? No.
Yeah, but that...
They wanted, pardon?
But, you know, let's stick to ENCODE.
That is ENCODE, that was in the, that's in the financials.
If he would have had access, he might have discovered that.
So Chief, let me...
Which I think is funny...
Let me ask a question, Beers, real quick. So ENCODE, would you say that ENCODE does not contain any of this confidential information?
No, it's a financial package. It's a financial package.
So we wrote a law...
And we had, we actually had it before.
Right.
And with a stroke of the pen in five minutes, it was taken out.
I, I...
It creates animosity, it creates distrust. And what happens is, is we get tied up as a council up here, not being able to do city business. And then it becomes a non-working atmosphere. And you and I agreed, and I watched the tape from the last council meeting and you and I both agreed, your words were, almost verbatim said, "Mayor, give him access to the ENCODE."
Exactly.
And, and what I, I talked to...
Still, we had a month later, we dealing with it again.
Wait, I talked to the chief today. The chief's secretary came over and explained her difficulty. We worked on it and I asked the chief, can you tell me if it's working? That's all, and then...
I can't, Ms. Whittle's all sick today. But we don't have the access that we had before, is the bottom line.
All I'm asking is, is that as we move to this, that we can have a conversation and that I want you to tell me if it's working, what we did and if it was correct. And we can move together. And if you want Ms. Whittle to come and talk and we can work through this, we're fine to do it. We also, over a year ago, which I thought was a great idea because I like you having access to your department and your health insurance information for your department. So I called and contacted Doll Insurance. And in fact, there are a series of emails and we had, they gave us the option of everyone having this email access so that you can view your access by department so that everybody can pull it up. I would ask you, again, if you would reconsider that access that was offered well over a year ago. And we can sit and talk to Doll Insurance again and say, what are the benefits? And, and, you know, what's involved? If for nothing else, that it provides information.
No, what was offered was you wanted to turn the responsibility of putting people on health insurance to the police department and we have an HR department.
No.
When open enrollment, yes ma'am, when open enrollment was offered this year for employees, my secretary was allowed to look at all the employees for the police department on health insurance. That's when she discovered that four former employees had been paid health insurance premiums for about a year to almost $22,000 that we lost out of our budget.
And prior...
And they were no longer employees.
And prior...
But what you offered before, let me get, what you offered before is you wanted us to enroll our employees in health insurance. That's not our job.
What it is, is an access level that lets you, you can say, look at something. You can say, you know what? This person no longer is with the city. You could either tell us, tell Doll, you could go view it on the access. You can see if it was taken on, off, whatever. It's as much as you want to do or as little as you want to do. It's visual access to all of the health insurance. That was well over a year ago.
That's not what this is about. This is about ENCODE. We had access to it originally. Someone from Tyler Technology, the company that produced the software, came to my office to see what my secretary had. And within a few minutes after they left, most of it was erased and she no longer was in five minutes, she lost access to read only. We don't want to change any figures.
As soon as Tracy gets back, please let her come over.
Why can't I just quit back what y'all took off?
Mayor, Mayor, Ms. Whittle should not have to walk back and forth from the police department to City Hall to give you information. For the love of God, give the man his access and let's move on. Give it to him. It's as simple as that. Oh, my God. I'm sorry.
See, turn on what you took off, that's all.
Alright, so Chief, so my point being, ENCODE's a financial package, contains no private information that shouldn't be out there. If it does, can maybe at the next council meeting, you, I hate to say it, but give us tonight on my list that this is the private information that should be not allowed to Chief Walker and will not be allowed in some, and... Because I know there's programmers that can stop access to that from him and give him access to what he needs.
First off, I don't know what ENCODE looks like. I've never seen a screen, so I, you know...
It's our financial package, which I believe is public knowledge.
There is, um... No, there's information about...
Well, how do they have access to it before?
There were...
Is payroll information kept on that system?
Yes.
It was, is, is, is health insurance premium information kept on the system?
Yes.
Is social security information kept on the system?
No. There is social security information. No, there is. That's why...
What I said. He had it before, it was taken away. Just give it back to him.
I'm happy that the secretary can't, she talked to us. I'm asking the chief to get back to me, is it working?
Chief, do you?
What was put on to try and delineate, it's gonna take a little conversation. That's it.
I'm working in the dark here because I really don't know what these screens look like. But what is it that you can't see?
So all I'm asking is for Ms. Whittle to come over. We've kind of had a little bit of a meeting...
He's looking for the city finances, which was approved by ordinance. Just as Councilman Wheeler just said, he had access already. It got taken away. Just give him the access back, that's it.
And I'm not, and I'm, there, you can do, there are reports that you can pull that pull out social security numbers, et cetera.
Okay, well, look, if this is, if this is it, then I guess I'm going, I guess I'm going to have to look at this as a lawyer and, and give somebody, I guess the council, an opinion on, on what can and can't be seen. And, you know, I hate to come down here and go through that.
Just like we kept saying, he had access already.
Right, now, now we're questioning people's social security number and maybe their premiums, but he had it before and it wasn't an issue.
It wasn't an issue, right.
If there's a case to be made for, for a deliberative process exception or a privacy exception to information on a database, at least I should take a look at it before I opine on it, right?
In my opinion, Mr. Beers...
Could I get an honest answer?
This is purely done out of spite. He had it before and she took it away. It's done out of spite. That's all it is.
Can I?
That's all it is.
Can I get an honest answer why we were removed, why it was deleted?
I, well...
Wait, somebody from ENCODE came to the office with your aid to see what we had access to, claiming something about a training program. And within a short period of time, when they went back to City Hall, my secretary went to go into ENCODE and the vast majority of it was eliminated. So whatever y'all turned off, just turn back on.
Took five minutes, take y'all off, take five minutes, put you back on.
What had, wait, wait. Chief, do you remember when we first came into office? We had a conversation about ENCODE. I'm just trying to get a little peace of mind here. And we said there were a lot of components that were antiquated, old reports, things that weren't working smoothly, things that weren't put in the right places, et cetera. So we've had some major projects come in to try and improve, educate, and then create the appropriate levels, access, et cetera. It's the same process that you look at in our court system, you look at in all computer systems. So there are multiple levels of access. We're happy to give you the reports. I think it got turned on already. I'm asking that Ms. Whittle get back to us to tell us if you have those reports and if they're working.
Why don't you get on?
That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and closing, City Attorney Beers, in closing, I would just want to read something to you. It says, "A mayor is required to obtain approval of all board of aldermen before the appointment or removal of a department head that occurs. And a mayor may enter into a contract with a third-party provider only upon approval of that board of aldermen." And it's under Attorney General Opinion, number 11-0084. And we don't have to address it tonight, but I'm asking you that you look into it and so we can address it at the next council meeting.
Can you send that to me?
Yes, I will.
Thanks.
New Business? There's no, um, do we have any new, yeah, New Business, number one. Appointments to the Fire Department Advisory Board. Chief, do you have your, the chief gets to, uh...
Chief gets to...
To place two appointments and then each council person gets?
Correct.
And the council, then, they vote on the council's nominees, but I think you just get to appoint yours. Do you have your appointments?
I do.
And who would you like to make those?
I would like to appoint Chris Henderson. And then I'd like to appoint Kelly Roche.
Thank you.
Or something like that. And I'll get to the proper spelling.
Please extend our thanks to those two individuals for their service. We really appreciate. Council nominations, do you have a nomination, Councilman Hewitt?
I was asked by some, I don't think all the council members have their nominees. I think with, maybe with February, just kind of crazy with Mardi Gras, and I did speak to Todd, if we could defer the appointments for the Fire Department, for the council, until the March meeting.
That'd be good.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Wheeler to defer the council's nominations to the March 2018 regular city council meeting, seconded by Councilman Johnston, all in favor. Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. Thank you. The nominations are deferred.
That's great.
And I'll encourage the council to please speak with our fire chief about anyone, if they want any ideas, et cetera, but nominees also. So, thank you very much.
Okay, new business number two, elected police department representative for the Civil Service Board.
Chief Walker, do you have your nominee for-
It's not a nominee.
It's not a nominee.
It's an appointment.
The employees voted Captain Adams to be their representative.
Okay, thank you very much. Congratulations, Captain. Number three?
Alrighty, number three, high content ABO application for R and E Jefferson LLC, located at 6492 Jefferson Highway.
Chief Walker, do you want to just say if all of them-
All of them, we're just waiting for the state police fingerprint results to come back, other than that, they all passed.
Because we have three, so-
They all passed, waiting the results of the state police.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
The same question arises for this one. It was asked for the city attorney's opinion, but was the church sold, or is the church to loan it, or?
The act of sale is Monday.
Okay.
And so, it's scheduled.
So, it's not going to be a church anymore?
No.
Okay, so this is good then?
So, we're fine.
Okay.
Um, Charlene called.
Who do you sign up?
Our regulatory clerk called. The date, it is dated for Monday, for the final act of sale. We also reached out to our Steve Rockett, we've reached out to another building official at, in another municipality, to make sure that this was fine.
Okay. So, do I have a motion to grant approval?
Second.
Do we want to, can we do this en bloc?
En globa?
Yes, en globa.
We go through them quick, I won't, but one, don't matter.
Okay.
Well, just read the addresses off.
Right.
Motion for the first one?
Okay, I have a motion to approve by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Benton, all in favor. Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. It's approved.
The next one's a high content ABO for the Pearl Room, located at 2310 Hickory Avenue.
Do I have a motion to-
Motion.
Grant approval, I have a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Bodey, all in favor. Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays.
And the last one is, um, high content ABO for Rite Aid, number 7268, at 8225 Jefferson Highway, it's a change of ownership.
Do I have a motion to grant approval?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Benton, oh, Councilman Wheeler, all in favor. Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. It is approved, the permit's approved, address the council.
Jean Marie Murphy, 120 Wood Lawn. Tonight is, I know that the mayor has shot me some looks, because I'm having a hard time keeping my mouth shut. I think everybody here can see the cat and mouse game that's going on with our tax dollars in our city budget. Obviously, somebody's hiding something, or being spiteful and playing games, and meanwhile, the city's work, the ability to repair our streets, the ability to award contracts, unless it's done unilaterally by the mayor, is stalled. And I wondered, you know, how did we get in this spot? Because I, I like to read. I've worked in, as a journalist, and a communication specialist for my entire career. So I went back, and I read a story posted December 31st, 2014. It was published in the New Orleans Times-Pacun, it was written by Adrian Quinlan. She was interviewing our first female mayor. After 95 years of men, Harahan prepares for an elected woman mayor. And it was a very interesting story, went into the history, Barbara Haney, Barbara Brutra, all of these different city council people talking about it. But to me, the most interesting part were the very few last paragraphs. I'm sure that you remember this story, probably have a copy of it in your wall. When they talked about what Mayor Michele wanted to accomplish during her term, she summed it up in one word, transparency. And let me read from the article. Indeed, Michele's one-word mission might be cooperation. Knocking on doors through the fall and at appearances at candidate forums, she emphasized transparency. She said she would put all of the government contracts up online for quick review. So, guess it'd be online, guys, so you could probably see it online. She would publish the city council agenda online, and she would cast a wide net for skilled volunteers to help Harahan shape up. The idea was to open city halls doors wider, and not close anyone out. Michele said, "I'm hoping that it invites people into the process. When you give them more information, trustworthy information, it gets people more engaged. When we make it more available, it all becomes more accountable. If you put an idea up on the internet, you get people to nibble on it." She can envision more volunteer events and groups of citizens deployed more often to tackle public issues. "We have so much talent in our city. We are very blessed with the people that live here," Michele said. "We have a rich, rich pool of human resources, who are, people who are willing to say, I just want to come and help."
Can I have a motion?
Motion for three more minutes.
Can I have a motion for three more minutes by Councilman Wheeler?
Second.
By Councilman Johnson, all in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays, motion passed.
So, we all know politicians promise things that they don't deliver. But I would say, this is a big promise that has not been delivered. When you're talking about the inability to conduct city business, the inability for the police chief to know what his balance and his basic checkbook is. I don't know about you, but when I pay my bills, I want to know if I have $2,000, $200, or $2 in my checking account when I'm done. Because otherwise, things are going to bounce, I'm going to be in trouble. This is a game, and it's got to stop. And the fact that, when she was talking earlier about contracts with the city, instead of remembering her campaign promises of putting them on the internet so everybody could see them, she said, "I defer to the city attorney for his interpretation of the law." Does that sound like transparency to you? And with respect to city attorney, I was deeply offended by your reference to Jason over here, about his grand inquisition when he asks questions. Quite frankly, we are allowed to ask questions. The fact she is elected is because people voted for her. And we have a right to hold her accountable for her actions and non-actions. So, the idea that inquiring is some kind of a grand inquisition, I think is not only disproportionate, it's offensive. We have the, the idea that this continues, month after month after month, and you say that we're trying to corral the mayor? Possibly, because we'd like to get something done. Nothing is getting done. She's awarding waste contracts on her own, she's eliminating recycling on her own, and you know, as well as we all know, and everyone in this room knows, that is against the law, that is against the ordinances that we have set out, and that is against any accountability. I want to know what Mayor Michele is hiding when she's hiding numbers. Is she taking the largest part of the budget, and putting it over here and there, but if the police chief actually looked at it, he'd say, hey, where's my money? I should have money here. Why is it over there? We have a right to know, and we are going to push this until we see it. So, Mayor Michele, I don't know if you plan on running for reelection, but when you do, I hope that you are held accountable for your complete lack of doing anything you said you were going to do. Thank you.
I don't know if I want to follow that. Wow.
I think we should follow tonight.
I'm just, I'm going to be brief then, I'm going to try, and I'm going to point, if everybody has a pen and paper, to line item 010-4-114-40890. I did a public records request recently, wherein I got Linda Lulu's emails regarding the trash contract. And in there, I find that some way, shape, or form, and I don't know how this happened, she had budgeted in 2017, $703,800 for waste. Do you guys remember that the contract was only for $605,000? With an additional $32,000 bump, that was amended later on. Plus an additional, get this, 2017, remember, when did recycling end? Like, February 2017, I think, maybe January? I'm sorry, March 1st. $112,390 was budgeted in 2017 for recycling. That doesn't make any sense at all. So, when she talks about moving, hiding money, burying money, why we want to see this stuff, now you know why. And I'm going to turn this over to you guys, enjoy it. I did the math, total amount of budgeted was over $800,000 for things that never cost that much. So, is she hiding money? I think so. I think so, and I think I got the numbers to prove it. Thank you.
We will now close, address the council. Secretary report. Secretary's report for January 2018, total revenue $665,923.82.
You want to report, Chief Walker?
First, folks, I want to give you a recap of 2017. Last month, we didn't have a report section, because we ran kind of late, midnight hour. So, for the year 2017, Harahan Police Department answered 7,860 calls for service, we handled 157 accidents, issued 999 citations, for 1,500 charges, two funeral escorts, 99 patrol requests, 181 narcotics arrests, 249 narcotics charges, 119 of those were felonies, 71 misdemeanors, and 59 city charges for narcotics. Other arrests were 824, other charges were 1,588, 151 felonies, 1,025 misdemeanors, 178 city, 234 traffic charges. There were no ro, no, I'm sorry, in 2017, there were no murders, no rapes, two simple robberies, 10 residential burglaries, two non-residential burglaries, three attempted burglaries, no motor vehicle thefts, 124 loss and he thefts, and 122 assaults. Ms. Benton was asking at the last meeting why bonds were down. Well, we had a spike in the last couple of years on felony arrests that were made, monumental, where our departments out there, they proactive, they're not answering the radio, they making proactive stops, proactive calls, proactive rotting through the neighborhoods. Okay. So, the month of January this year, we had 557 calls for service, nine accidents, 32 citations issued, 51 charges, no funeral escorts, patrol requests were eight, 21 narcotics arrests, 28 narcotics charges, 11 felonies, 15 misdemeanors, two cities. Other arrests were 48 for the month, other charges were 143, 22 felony, 92 misdemeanor, five city, and 24 traffic. No murders, no rapes, one attempted armed robbery with an arrest, two residential burglaries, no non-residential burglaries, no attempted burglaries, no motor vehicle thefts, no attempted motor vehicle thefts, six large and he, loss and he thefts, and seven assaults. So, again, lock it, please, your house and your cars. Thank you.
Chief Sancia?
No, thank you.
Councilman Hewitt?
Oh, I just wanted to tell my brother's bar, thank you for the hat, I appreciate it, and reminder to the citizens that their grand opening is Saturday, March 24th, at 6:00 PM. February, February 24th. Oh, February 23rd, at 6:00 PM. February 23rd, at 6:00 PM. I apologize for my mistake.
Councilman Johnson?
Uh, number one.
Councilman Bodey?
I'm excited to see the, the new business and the business opportunities that want to come to Harahan. I've always been pro-business from day one, nine years now. I do think we have an awesome opportunity, but the window will close soon, and that is to promote our financial corridors, because we are the safest city in Louisiana. And if any business, through, through working with the businesses, any business would love to come here, and, and I, I reach out to you, come promote your company, come get a plug for your business. I got to tell you, we have some amazing things here. The avenue over there is killing it. Mr. Lenny, Happy Italian, y'all, best pizza I ever had in my life, over here at the Oak Oven. Man, they have this auto choke with crab meat on it, it's unbelievable. You know, and so, so that's what we should do, we should support our community. You know, it's hard that we go through all these trying times, and, and the words that get used up here, it's terrible. I got to tell you, it's never been like that for me, under any other mayor, but it is what it is, and that's what it is now, and we need to figure out how to fix it. But as a community, we do need to come together, and in that, in that community of be coming together, we need to make sure we support our own. And again, at always, you can always reach me on my cell, 3437762, whether you want to holler, scream at me, curse at me, I don't care. You want to call me up, tell me, I had some lady call me up the other day, tell me I was in the mafia. It doesn't matter, you call me up, you let me know, and if you have any concerns, or you need any help, I'll be there. Because that's what I was elected to do, and that's my job. Thank you.
Councilman Benton? Councilman Wheeler?
Yes, ma'am, I would like to let everybody know that the Harahan Firefighters Association will be handling, handing their annual fish fry next Friday, March 2nd. They're going to serve from lunch from 11:00 to 1:00, and dinner from 5:00 to 7:00. You get fried fish, boiled potatoes, corn, and a brownie. It's going to be $8 a plate, they will have drive-through. You can also walk up. It also says, if you want large orders delivered, maybe for your office, you can call 737-9957. So, please come out and support this, it's a big benefit for the Harahan Firefighters Association. So, next Friday, March 2nd.
Councilman, thank you for remembering that, my head must still be in disney. Thank you.
I hope you had a good time.
I did, thank you.
And I'd like to jump back in if I can, real quick. I forgot, well, they have one tomorrow, but this is going to be too late by that time. St. Rita has one tomorrow, the 23rd, and they're also going to have one March 16th, from 5:00 to 8:00, at St. Rita, so.
I was about to say that, thank you very much.
So, your next Friday.
I would just like to, I'm very excited about some of the developments in the city of Harahan. We have a lot of things to look forward to. If you, as you exit tonight, I want you to look across the street, there was, the gas station changed hands, we, it's going back to be a Shell again, so we're going to be getting a franchise fee, and they are pumping anywhere from $400,000 to $500,000 in bringing that back to life. I met with the new owner, Mr. Ray is just charming, and since we've talked, I said, can you please make this Shell station fit into our bedroom community? And he's really worked with us to make it fit in, and suit our, our neighborhoods. We also have some other projects slated that are coming. As they become more firm, I will let everyone know, and keep you abreast of the projects. We did just complete doing a memorandum of understanding with JW Colonial, in order to proceed with the project of bringing the Blake to the city, and securing the corner property- property as residential, and also not just residential, that it will match the neighborhood, and that it will be single-family, it won't be multifamily, et cetera. And a more sophisticated plan moving forward on our drainage and stormwater. I want to thank Gilbert Bures, who has, um, large part has written much of that memorandum, who has supported and defended the residents and the property owner himself, themselves, to get this off the ground, so thank you very much. But on that note, uh, we can pay the bills.
All right, bill's paid in January 2018, $551,960.52.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion by Councilman Benton, seconded by Councilman Bodie, all in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? Five yays, zero nays. I don't think anyone else wants to stay.